We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Sandy, can you do roll call?
Counselperson Brunie.
Brunie?
Yes, sir.
Perry?
Yes.
Mailer?
McGinty?
Yes.
Move on to line two. Is there any conflict of interest? If none, we'll move on to three. We'll need a motion for the consent of agenda.
I would move passage of consent.
I'll second that.
It's moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Perry?
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Move on to line four. This is time for citizens have the opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda.
Dale.
All the letters, man.
Of any importance?
He didn't say that.
So move it.
Move on to line five under miscellaneous. Sandy, you can go ahead and have the opening and review of the bids for the city property described as east-west alley line within block 11 between lot five and six, Platts Edition, Sec City, Sec County aisle, which would be up by the Pumps Building.
This is the alley that lies between basically, it's, they own the two lots above it, the two lots below it, and half the alley. They just don't own one portion of the alley.
Which one's this?
Up by Barbell.
Pumps, Barbell, the old Barbell property.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll do that one. Yep, yep.
There's only one bid. We've got the completion of the compliance with bid conditions from D and E Inc. The amount of the bid is a dollar.
And they have to pay all the associated costs.
Correct, yeah.
Who's D and E?
D and E, I believe, don't quote me on this, is a conglomeration of Domino's and Ella Brock, who are the owners of the property being leased by Pumps.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of $1 for the property.
And we'll need amended with the name of the bidder and that they were the highest bidder, right?
You were wanting to move on to the resolution.
Oh, we're back here. Right.
Okay. Is that what you're, you're moving to be?
Yes.
Approving the resolution that would award it? We would need to make a motion to approve it, amending it to include the name of the highest bidder and the amount of the highest bidder.
I make a motion to do what Adam said.
So we're making an amendment or we?
Amendment to.
Well, you're making a motion to approve it as amended.
Okay. We don't, okay, I would second that.
It's been moved in seconded. Any other discussion on the property? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Not often we get to return an alley to commercial property taxes.
Move on to five C. We'll need a motion in second for the consideration of approving the detour revocation information sheet with Iowa Department of Transportation.
Were these dollars in keeping of what you were expecting, running?
Actually, it's a little bit more than I was expecting. You know, the one thing we were paying careful attention to was the North Fifth Street Bridge and the condition of the North Fifth Street Bridge to see if there were any noticeable condition changes before to after the use of it. And I, just so you're aware, every two years, we bring in an inspector to review the bridge, and the bridge scored the same score before and after the project.
Therefore, it's not deteriorating enough to be utilizing these funds.
If it would have changed, I would be talking, we'd be having a very different conversation. Thank you.
I would move to approve the detour revocation information with Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of $17,012,96.
And this is what they reimburse us, right?
Correct. Don't they just add it in with their road view, uh, mound?
I'll second that.
Yeah.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Or Brunie? Yes.
Yep. Perry?
Yes.
It's not just me.
You get used to saying that, but it's gonna be hard.
When you're gone, Sandy, they give me a hard time about not being able to tell whether I'm saying Brunie or, or Brynie.
Move on to five D. Now we'll be considering of approving new opportunities mentoring programs request for donation, which Adam has information on.
Sure. I talked to Jane Wilhelm up at the mentoring program. In your packet was their two-page flyer that had been previously used down in Carroll and other counties. Basically, what they're doing is trying to boost up the program to provide some form of benefits to those who provide mentoring services to people. They have asked the city council, and it's not necessary you take action today, but they have asked that the council consider providing some type of benefit to mentors in case, in for next season. Because they believe at this point in the season, by the time everything would get approved and printed out for them, it would kind of be a waste this season. But they would like to offer the adults who provide the mentoring program to potentially, for instance, individual day passes, give them a handful so that they can give them to them as a thank you for providing that service. Like I said, the council doesn't have to act on this tonight, but they asked us to take it into consideration for next season.
For the full?
Correct, yes.
And one-day free pass, single pass, we hand out. Any bad idea?
You can see here on what they, they're trying to piggyback on some programs they're doing in other counties. You'll see some of the other things they're offering in those places.
So if anybody's interested in doing that, they can make a motion or not.
How many mentors do they typically have?
I can't answer your questions. I, when I talked to Jane, she said she was, would be happy to come if you had questions that she'd be happy to answer moving forward. If you would like her to come and talk to you before you take action on this, I can't notify her that, that you would like to hear from her first.
Otherwise, we could hand out six or eight, and they'd have a few to hand out to.
I mean.
Based on their, depends on if they count their school mentoring program on top of their regular mentoring program. They have a lot at the school.
A daily pass is, what, five bucks?
Give or tag, five, six bucks, yeah.
So if we did 20 daily passes, it'd be a $100 donation, basically, to them?
And the angle is, in my eyes, is you could actually end up with some kids joining, you know. There's a chance you would, if you gave out 20 passes, if two joined next year or got passes, it's well worth it.
So are they wanting something more like what they've got here, like so much off of an admission where they can?
No, when Jane and I.
Put it on the back of the card, or is she?
When Jane and I.
Maybe she should come talk to us.
When Jane and I talked, she really didn't feel like we had anything that would work from a discount standpoint, because it would just mess up our numbers. She was thinking, it was actually her idea, the individual daily passes.
So they're actually going to, like, if we would only give, how many did you say?
20.
20?
I mean, I threw out the number 20. I mean, I.
She didn't really specify an amount to me. Like I said, I'd be happy, I think she would feel very comfortable coming and talking to us about what the program does. I'm not knowledgeable enough about the program to really speak to it, other than what she provided me to present to you.
Might be neat if we had some way to come up with a daily pass for a mentor and a mentee to go together. I mean.
My guess is I would, if we give them 20, I'm guessing if two of them went to project.
They would get those.
They would get it, and then when they're gone, they're gone, you know. So if there was 20 that went out and did a mentor project, you know, when they're gone, you move on. That's how I guess they'd, I don't think they're just gonna hand them out, say, here you go. I think it's gonna be, you do something, you get awarded for it, and the pool pass would be an award to it.
Well, like I said, Jane, we can, I mean, it'd be, might be worth just having Jane to come to learn more about exactly how the program works.
Give us an idea on numbers, I think, at that point.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Let's, switching comments, come to me.
That'd be good.
I think it's a good program. I'd certainly like to support it. If they have 100 mentees, maybe, if you don't want to do one, you know, one a piece, and have five mentee, you know, whatever.
Move on to five E. We'll need a motion in second for the consideration of establishing a handicap parking spot at the Iowa State Bank, which they have two, I think, now, but they want to move it to the south side.
If you read the email that's in your packet, you'll see that they would like to eliminate the parking spot, parking area directly west of the bank, and also the one to the north of our sign, and they would like the city to consider setting up the one that is closest to Frontier, I guess is the best way to probably say it, as a, the new handicap spot.
So is, so one of them is on their property, the one by their sign, is that on the street or is that?
It's on their property.
On their property, too.
Yeah.
Do we have any kind of a plan for, I mean, I guess I'm looking at, I have no problem with doing this, but so we put one there, now is Jenkins going to want a handicap parking spot right in front of there?
I think he decided to go along.
Typically, what we've done in the past is we've handed this over to the police chief to do a review of and give a recommendation to us. That's the way we did with the Jackson Medical.
Brains.
Yeah.
I mean, I have, I have no problem with doing it.
And they're taken away, though, right? Didn't that say they were?
Yeah.
But they want to add a different one.
Move one, move to the other.
Yeah, so. They were not adding any.
But the two they're getting rid of are their own private, right? They're on their property.
Yeah.
But this one would be closest to the door, which makes sense for handicap.
No, no, I'm not saying it doesn't make sense, I'm just, I'm just.
But now we're responsible, you mean, for the.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm asking is.
If you think from the standpoint of getting up onto the sidewalk, that spot probably makes the most logical sense, because it would be right there at the alleyway so they can use the ramp to get it up onto the sidewalk and into the building.
And the one to the north is the one that just, it's all by itself, right there in the middle of that little stub? Okay.
Well, technically, the one on the west side, that's probably correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so hypothetically, if they wanted to leave one or both there along with the one that we had, there'd be no problem with that.
Right.
Right?
They're simply asking us, I mean, a lot of that's dictum, what they're doing on their property. For our purposes, what they're asking is they're asking for us to establish a new
So they just want one spot, that's all?
Correct.
He says they're putting an electric door in, and that'd be the closest to the electric doors, so they can come right in.
Does the police department have any issues with this?
With that, no.
Would you like to review it first?
Nope, I'm good.
So we have a motion to.
I would move approve a handicap parking spot at the alley on Audubon Street in the State Bank.
I'll second it.
Would it be an alley, though? They're doing it on the street.
I mean, at.
At the corner of the alley.
Whatever street that is.
Street. Audubon.
It's on Audubon, on Audubon Street adjacent to the alley between.
And we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to five F. We'll need a motion for the consideration of a resolution number 2016-13 entitled Resolution Designating City of Sec City's Representative.
It's a common practice for us to have two individuals capable of signing off on the federal grant documentation, CDBG, FAA, the, the other ones we've had, too. Typically, the recommendation is, is the mayor and myself, so that, since I'm the one on hand most often, and of course, the mayor being the executive of the city, being the ideal location to have those two places, those two designees. But I'm more than willing to give mine up to anybody else who wants to have the signature authority.
I would move passage of our resolution number 2016-13.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move on to five G. We'll need a motion for the consideration of closing Torgay Street and all the southeast State Street and southwest State Street, south of Main Street on September 10, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for a program to honor local public safety personnel.
Now, I've always called it Torgay, is it?
It's Torgay.
Torgay? Oh, okay.
It should, there should be an accent to ghoul over the first D, Torgay.
Work on that.
Or Torgay.
Torgay, for those of us that don't have that.
Do we know how the guy it's named after now and pronounced it?
Torgay.
Probably like Bruce said. So where's the street at now? I don't even know where the street's at.
Okay. This is Monument Square is here.
Okay.
Main Street. This is southeast State, southwest Street.
Front of the fire station, basically. And that side street.
The hometown pride committee is hoping to do an event on September 10, which is the eve of the 15th anniversary of 9/11, to honor police, sheriff, fire, EMTs, and use the, use that area, get, hopefully get some kids' activities there and some demonstrations from various people and work on that. I think that we'll have a helicopter flying, have a rescue helicopter that day.
Sounds good.
Have you received feedback from the public safety people as far as taking part?
The ones, I'm not the one that's in charge of contacting them all, but what I've heard is that, yes, there will be people.
And I apologize, I, for the spediency of time and to kill the middleman in the process, I did have the radio station down in Carroll contact you directly to get information on this event.
Okay.
So if you're wondering how they got ahold of you, that, they called me and started asking questions, and I said, you're talking to the wrong individual.
Okay. All right. Maybe that's, maybe that's the Carroll numbers I haven't been answering today, because I didn't know who they were.
That'd be the radio station down there trying to get ahold of you.
Okay. All right, I'll answer them. So that's, this one of the, it's modeled somewhat after an actual made-out type of event, except it's not on Saturday, we're doing it on 9/11.
I'll make a motion to approve closing Torgay Street. Torgay Street. The streets that are mentioned in the, for September 10, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the program to honor local public safety personnel.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If none, we'll move on to a vote.
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brunie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Move on to five H. Committee and department head reports.
That's eight times a lot for them to go to Carroll. Is that about normal, what they've been doing with recycling?
Well, you have to remember, anytime we get a full truck now, I mean, and it varies from week to week, depending on the weather conditions.
But when they get done out there, then that will all stop?
Yes, and I'll let Bruce talk about that when he gets, there's some bad news on that front, so.
Yeah, the, the building is definitely not on schedule out there. I mean, I was out there today. They're asking for extend, it's supposed to be done by the first of August, and at the moment, there are parts that just have the footings poured, so I don't, there's no way in the seventh circle of Hades that they're going to actually make that date. We have a Leinfield Commission tonight, I have a feeling that will be an interesting one. I'll just state that.
Now, why it is a drain as far as our manpower. Why it is a drain is, of course, on our manpower. There is some reimbursement elements in the agreement. I understand Bruce will be reconfirming that they'll be extending those reimbursements for the additional time period.
Yes.
We typically have more recycling, Teresa answered your question more thoroughly, in the spring and the summer than we have in the fall and the winter, and the, so they would be, and we've been dry, which is pretty consistent with the high volume period. They, of course, if we extend the time, it's going to continue to be somewhat a drain on resources, but a certain amount of that was expected this summer.
I would be surprised if it weren't done by the end of September. I would, I would be happy to be surprised. And you had no problem with closing of the streets around the square?
No, no, I read that, nope.
We passed it, so that's a thing.
Yep.
We'll move on to council forum.
I think what we have to do is review the cemetery, is that right?
Yes.
Cemetery review.
I was out there today, we haven't received any complaints. As Curtis knows, I haven't been given any many calls lately, so.
I haven't received any complaints either.
So, and in fact, I've heard of one or two positive responses over the last couple of weeks.
Positive things here?
Yes, it doesn't happen often, but.
I have heard a couple, one actually today.
I drove by today, it looks good.
Very good.
And of course, I drove, went out there quickly today, running through it and preparing for this evening, and, I mean, work's being done, so.
Got any internal issues you want to address with me? And you're noticing nothing?
I'm sorry?
Do you guys have anything internally that you want to see happen that isn't the subject of the complaint yet?
No, I mean, I guess one question I'd have, and it's not really for you, maybe it's for us, there are some areas that, I mean, the soil and everything, it's pretty fragile out there. I mean, so I know we did some infilling last spring. Is there other plans to do some more of that this fall?
Yeah, I mean, there's windows of time when you do that for the purposes of.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
One meeting.
Yeah.
All good, thank you.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are you gonna stick around, Curtis? I do have one thing after the meeting for you. Okay.
You have anything else in the council forum?
Yes, I do have, in your packet was a copy of a letter that I, that the council, the mayor and myself received from Ross and Denise Opsel. Their intent at this time was to simply have this before you, to get your filling for it, and to seek some feedback from the council. It basically pertains to their, something that Shudo had actually presented to the council a few months ago, and that was the consumption and selling of alcohol on the right-of-way area where their current deck location is on the front of the building. They would like the city to consider allowing for that type of service. You might remember that during the conversation with Shudo, that I had met a point of saying that under the current restraints of what's set up, the only exceptions that are set up for are basically for one-time, you know, individual event activities. There is not currently anything set up for the standpoint of having some type of permanent sell and consumption of alcohol on property that the city has responsibility on. And to kind of clarify that point, I was asked to provide you guys a coffee tonight. You'll see chapter 45 of the city code before you. I highlighted it, it's a little hard for you to tell, but at the bottom, 45.02, number two. The first line pertains to public streets, highways, which would include the right-of-way areas, and it provides for a prohibition in that area for the consumption and the consuming and use of alcohol. Line two pertains to explaining public places, facilities, and things of that nature. So you might ask the question about, sometimes the Chautauqua Building comes up as a discussion item. Well, you'll see it provides an exemption on those premises if liquor licenses are set up, and that's where kind of the second page you see added in with it. It's a copy of the form for signing up through the park department for Chautauqua Building, that second page. And you'll see about the middle of the page, you'll see that it says, I understand that alcohol is prohibited at the Chautauqua Building unless I receive a temporary liquor issued by the city advance, blah, 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 blah. It also talks about some administrative rules pertaining to the limitations of doing that. We do not have provisions in place for any type of permanent allowance, and that is what the Opsels are seeking, is whether or not the council would entertain the idea of a permanent, or at least I would assume semi-permanent, since the chances are, you're not going to try to sell alcohol in the wintertime, but a somewhat semi-permanent ability to sell alcohol on the public right-of-way.
So looking at the Chautauqua Building Agreement, the last full paragraph, where the renter agrees to indemnify it, blah, 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 is that worth the paper that it's written on?
Not really, no. I will tell you that any, I mean, anything where you can get a person to admit that they are releasing you is a benefit at some level, but I will tell you that when Teresa goes down there and has an incident, gets hurt as a result of it, her lawyer is not going to stop short of suing the people putting on the event, the people who injured you, and the city, since it is their facility and location. That's, whether we can get out of it or not, whether, I mean, that's a whole nother discussion for insurance and attorneys to discuss. I'm not an attorney, I can't discuss that nature, but I will tell you, yeah, we will be named in a lawsuit. It will happen.
So in the same, would probably be the case if there were alcohol served on a sidewalk, which is city property.
That's against the law.
So the sidewalks are city property, that was gonna be my next question.
Well, they, the sidewalks down.
Container, anything on the public.
The sidewalks downtown are built.
No matter what it is, it's breaking the law.
The sidewalks are typically built on city right-of-way. Most of them include, encompass the area known as city right-of-way. City right-of-way, if you look as far as property ownership goes, it will show as an extension of the roads. There is not a distinguishing between the road themselves and the right-of-way themselves. And it is, so, for all extent purposes, we are a partner in ownership of the right-of-ways.
So how does Viking Bay get by with it? Because it's their property?
Viking Bay's is on their property.
And it's fenced in.
And it is fenced in.
And it goes by the laws.
Correct.
Don't know where.
And there's only one way in and out, it's supposed, by the law, it's supposed to be from their building.
Upstate would kind of work if they had it fenced in, where going the way into that would be through the building, so. Because wouldn't that work if?
If what?
The only way in, upstate.
They would have to close that off to do it legally, and have a door from inside their building come.
To the deck.
In and out, just to the building. It's illegal to do it.
And not be on city property.
And not be on city property.
It would be, putting everything else aside, there's several questions here.
I just don't know how we'd rewrite this to make it, I mean.
There's several issues here. One is, is do you want to just let them, the first, the major question is, do you want to allow this consumption and serving of alcohol on the right-of-ways? Once you get back to that question, it is, then you got to set the terms of which it is allowed on a permanent basis. And, you know, you control that element completely.
You could overwrite that state law then about them? I thought you could just make them stricter, you couldn't overwrite them.
No.
There's no drinking in the, if that's public property, right?
There's no exception in the state law.
I mean, if you ask me, this is a dead issue, because they're breaking the law, no matter what you, if you even give them permission, they're still breaking the law, because they're on public property drinking, so they're breaking that law.
They're out where people can see them.
And it's public property, and that falls under that code.
Yeah.
Does this law change if it's a balcony?
Well, it wouldn't be on their property, it wouldn't be on the city's property, then I wouldn't imagine, would it?
Well.
You'd be hanging over it.[1771.32] You'd be hanging over it.
If it's on-
Well, you're still-
Are we talking about a deck thing out front?
Yes.
Well, isn't that sort of short?
It's sitting on the, on the city property, and it's, it's done.
You mean like a, like, so like a balcony would be attached to the-
No, you're talking about balcony, I'm thinking a second floor coming out.
Yeah, on the second floor, having like support beams going on their private property, or onto the public property.
You know, to be honest, you know, now you're getting into discussions about airspace. Yeah, that's-
Planning a zoning too.
Yeah, we're getting into a whole nother ball of wax there.
To be honest, probably their best bet would be to put a circular staircase in the building, and do something on the roof, do a rooftop overlooking it.
Yep.
Now, do I want to volunteer to go up and down the circular staircase with pitchers of beer? No, but, I guess, as long as it would increase the city liability, and I think we would, I mean, if we did that, I have a feeling that the place on state would want to do the same situation, probably.
Well, exactly, when we go to the place on state and we arrest somebody for standing outside drinking a beer, or give them a ticket for open container, when they're doing the same, because they're sitting on a little wood deck.
Has that happened before?
We've rode open, I don't think, we, we're not me.
Right.
I mean-
Doesn't happen that often.
But potentially, it could happen.
I'm just saying, it's breaking the law.
Right.
I mean, I don't know why you'd agree with-
And there's no way by looking at that ordinance that we could change it to make it any different if it's-
You're gonna have to have a lawyer write it, I mean, I can tell you that right now, this is beyond my scope of being able to write it.
Well, it sounds like they think just because it's not Highway twenty anymore, that that solves everything, but-
Well, see, and before, that right-of-way was owned by the state, and so the state absolutely would not even consider it, so, yeah.
But can you overwrite the alcohol, beer?
I don't think so.
I mean, by their rules, though, even saying, though, that they have to have a way in from the building and off of the street.
That was true, no, that would have to stay in place, that rule would have to stay in place.
You know, so-
Because I think unless there's an exception written in the code, like particularly the hunting issue, where we have, where we have an option, where you can do that, but there's, now you can't supersede-
Ours can only be stricter.
That's what I'm saying, because with this, even an open container.
And then I think we're getting into a different issue, that with the facade program, if they were to try and cut an additional door out of there, we have an easement on the building.
Like I said, at this point, they just wanted some feedback, the, I think I have enough here, I can share back with them some comments.
Anything else on the council forum?
I've had a couple complaints with golf carts, with kids on them. The more I listen to the complaints, they're mainly to do with one person with some kids. I guess for right now, I decided, or I talked to Adam earlier, maybe I'll just try to, I have addressed it this person, I need to address it again, or give them a ticket, and then let's see where it goes from there, instead of trying to change the whole code, because of the one.
Taking advantage of it, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're riding with an infant on it, with four people on it, I mean, I'd hate to, I don't want to change the whole code, where we gotta have no kids, and-
No golf cart.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess after thinking about it, Dave, we discussed, maybe I just, I start with just going after that one that's creating most of my complaints, which is something to keep in mind in the future.
And these complaints are based on safety concerns.
They're safety, yeah, which, I mean, I mean, I had a complaint down here one day, and it was, I left, I caught them right up the street, with a little infant in their hand, and three of them, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that, too. Everywhere.
Technically, I could be-
And texting and driving, too, have you noticed that?
Have they?
Uh-huh, she has.
Well, they're Pokemon.
They're probably Pokemon.
Still, it's a legal text, even a golf cart.
Anything else on the council forum? If none, we'll move on for a motion for adjournment.
It's moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Sandy can call for a vote.
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Bruning?
Yes.
Yes.